Hey, Don.
How's it going, Tom?
Be good. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. This new computer downloaded or up installed some new software and then the internal audio internal sound doesn't work, so I have to use the little JBL speaker.
Gotcha.
But we fixed it.
Yeah, it is very interesting. I think I was fascinated by it, but I felt like I was missing something.
Hey, Lisa.
Even all the way through it, or just did you come to a point where you're like, oh?
Well, for sure at the beginning, it felt like, okay, this is very simple and slow.
Yes, yes.
What's behind this and?
I know, I'm kind of searching too.
Hi, Marshall.
Hey, Lisa.
Hi, Tom.
Hey there.
Marine and I are here.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Marine.
Whoops, I gotta get on with video. Forgot my, am I muted?
No.
See, I'm muted. Am I muted?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, I can't hear you. Maybe I'm missing something. Maybe he's just not listening.
Hey, Andy.
I printed off almost everything. I didn't print out the light thing. That was the dark skies. That was pretty lengthy, so.
But you printed the, the, this part, the, the working draft?
I did, and I printed the spreadsheet, but it didn't come out.
Oh, right.
So, yeah.
Cool. Well, um. Shall we get Roland and let other people?
I can't hear you. Can you hear us?
You can't hear me? Oh, no.
No.
I've got you both.
You can hear me, Andy?
I can. And I can, I can hear Lisa as well.
Oh, oh, there we go. Okay, I hear you.
Okay. All right. Well, cool. Yeah, hopefully this is like the last meeting we ever do over Zoom.
That would be nice.
Yeah, it's, it seems like we could start meeting in the park, so.
That'd be great.
Thanks, everybody for, yeah, tolerating the format. So, yeah, I guess I sent out a whole bunch of documents. Do, does anybody have any kind of questions about where we're at in the process or kind of what are? Yeah, I guess to, to kind of summarize, you know, we've been working on all these documents and I think partly out of my ignorance, I had been sort of treating what we were doing as like the plan. But as it's gotten closer to the point of bringing it to the commission, you know, the city has made it clear that we, we should be following this process that like the Conservation Board went through with their revision of the dark skies ordinance of just kind of, yeah, being more formal about it in, in just like recommending the creation of a plan to the city and, you know, everything we've developed is kind of a a framework of and stuff for them to consider. So really kind of the one focus of discussion, I think for us today is this letter that we would be submitting to the commission that has these specific points of, you know, our, our specific recommendations of things that would be included in the plan and maybe related to the plan, but could be maybe done outside of or before it, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, that's, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
That's what, that's what I just learned is that our role is to make recommendations. And so that's why I see that, you know, the information you provided that we had to kind of to sort of take a step back and sort of toss the ball in the city commissions court and see how they want to proceed. And then, but I like, you know, I had a couple, I made a couple of notes on the the letter, but other than that, it's everything looks good and just when it is in the councils or commissions court, I'm just wondering how we can sort of keep tabs on what they're doing with it. You know, if they're going to take it seriously and move forward quickly.
Yeah, so I was able to talk on the phone with Michael Cardos this morning and just kind of check out this recommendation letter with him and make sure we're square with the process. So we don't get any, any kind of binds when we bring this to the commission and yeah, he said that the letter basically looked good as far as that kind of numbered process of what would happen, you know, what, what we're suggesting is a process for creating the plan. He said, we don't even need to like bold it out like that. I mean, essentially what we're asking the commission to do is to assign to the city manager, the task of creating an Emerald Ash Borre plan. Taking into consideration what we're recommending here. So then really the bullet points below that are kind of a kind of the meat of the recommendation letter in some ways then.
I'm sorry, what? They're kind of in what?
They're kind of the, the main, in some ways, they're the most important part of the recommendation letter.
Oh, the meat of the, okay. Then what do you want from us right now?
Right. Um, so I think, yeah, our task today, sorry, this is all kind of changed in the last week for me a little bit. With this new information, I guess before I thought that we were gonna have more of a nitty gritty discussion about some of the questions that Shannon had and in his revisions, which we could still do, but I guess at this point, you know, if we're handing everything to the city to come up with a plan and then they're going to come back to us for comment on it. Those details maybe aren't as important. And really the kind of, the most important part is this letter. And I guess the, the main thing I see then is for group discussion today is whether we're kind of leaving anything big out. So, you know, in, in looking at the letter and then the big report, I guess is what I've started calling it. Is there anything that we're really missing? And I, that's the thing I worry about the most is, you know, I've been working on this all these months and just whether I have like blind spots. And, you know, we've had some new concerns come up in recent meetings about some of the ash tree replacements and, you know, how much of that do we want to kind of put specifically in this? I've tried to incorporate some of those things. So I guess in general, the question is, you know, when people look at this, are they, are we comfortable? Do we feel like we're at a point where we can bring this to the commission? Yeah, do we need to make changes to it?
Okay, can you reiterate? So all we're presenting then is the letter. We're not presenting the rough draft plan?
Um, no, we would, we would present everything. So what we would, what we would bring to the commission in a meeting probably as an action item would be the letter where we're basically saying, you know, we're recommending that the commission assigned to the manager, the task of creating an Emerald Ash Borre plan. And then kind of bulging it out. Kind of what our high level recommendations are, including some of these specific things that the city could be doing even before then to kind of help with ash borre. So that'd be one. Number two would be the big recommendation report is what I've started calling it, but it was what we had been calling our working draft and that's kind of where we've done a lot of the legwork of tracking down this information that the city can draw from for making a plan. And I guess the third and four things that are really just supporting that recommendations report are that spreadsheet with the cost calculations and the ash tree inventory. So we would be handing that all to the commission and saying, we, we would like city staff to create a plan using these things that we've come up with as a, as a reference.
Marshall, I don't have a real problem with, with how this is laid out because we don't have a lot of choice. But when I look at the policy that establishes our board, I do see the recommendation for it, but it does say in there specifically in certain places, write a plan. So we've kind of written a plan, then we pull out the meat of it, put it in a letter and say, you guys ought to write a plan incorporating these thoughts. And I guess that's, that's the arena we're in and I'm, I'm okay with a motion and, and moving forward with the letter. But I, I'm concerned that if we don't write the plan, it's not going to get written and we're going to get blindsided. It is, I wish we would be there was a mechanism for requesting that we are tasked with writing the plan so that we can submit the plan we've already written. If that makes sense. It's an odd, it's an odds paradox we're in here.
Right. So we're talking about renaming our working draft to a, to what? Just a recommendation?
It's a rec, Lisa, the way I understand it and the way I think Marshland has, has written it, in short, the city does not want to accept a dra, a, a plan written by us. They want a request or a recommendation from us to write a plan. And we can lay out in there some thoughts about what we think should be in it. And then they want to assign the writing of that plan to their own entity, be that us or an employee or a consultant or whatever. And am I mistaken, Marshall?
No, that's exactly it.
So then what's our mechanism to continue? To continue to ascertain that this is continuing on that, or, you know, we're going to put it in their hands. What do we have as a mechanism to, to keep the ball rolling?
Yeah, that was my question.
We don't have.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's.
Hey, Dan.
Hello. Sorry I'm late. I'm, I'm sitting in for Eric today. I'll try to answer any questions if you have for the city or anything, or I can ask Eric or Shannon myself if you guys need anything from me.
Well, yeah.
Right.
Dan, I guess I have a question. Was, thank you for jumping in here. We're just discussing the, the process for putting this, putting this Emerald Ash Borre letter forward. What's the mechanism once the letters are received to get the plan written?
Um, you know, I, I'd have to ask Shannon, you know, I'm not, I'm not too experienced with this myself, so I'm just, you know, I'm trying, learning as we go too. So yeah. It'd be nice if Shannon maybe came into these meetings too, and then he could answer them himself, you know, but I'm still trying to learn and I'm, I'm, I don't have some, I don't have that answer right now, I guess.
Okay. Well, that's fair enough. I, I, maybe one of the thoughts I have is as we submit this letter, if we could somehow also convey to the commission that we would be willing to write the plan for the city, that, that, that would, that would help move this along a little bit, that we have the expertise and would be willing to do it.
Yeah. Did you guys talk to Shannon at all about this or is it?
Well, I corresponded with Shannon a little bit and I talked with Michael Licardos this morning.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, this might be helpful here. So Michael explained to me that basically what would happen, let's see here, try and pull up my notes. So I can get this right, but, um, basically, once the, if the commission accepts this and assigns to the manager of writing this EIB plan. Okay, so if the commission says they want it right now, then it would kind of jump to the front of the line. So if they, it's really in the commission's court how much of a priority this is. So basically, you know, there are all these other plans that other boards and that the city are working on, and there's going to be this whole new flood of them too, coming out of the growth policy. So if the commission doesn't sort of give it that priority, it would get what did, Michael said it would get racked and stacked with other plans as a, just an item in the strategic plan. And so the way I interpret that is that it could take years for this plan to be written. So, yeah, I think maybe it's worth putting in the letter or, yeah, maybe putting in the letter just that, you know, we think this is a pretty urgent issue that, uh, I guess giving our pitch for why we think that this could maybe jump to the front of the line and be a priority for the city.
And then would Shannon have to write it up then, or you, you guys are proposing that you write it up and Shannon presents it to the, to them? Then is that what you're saying?
Um, yeah, to be honest, that's all kind of a mystery to me. I mean, it basically goes to Cardos and I mean, I talked through him about this, this morning and I don't, I'm not sure he has an idea of how this would be written up, whether it would be Matthew writing it. Whether they would try and find a consultant, whether they would, you know, I think he said they would definitely consult with DNRC and others, which I think is great.
Which is great. Isn't that what you've already done, Marshall, is consulted with DNRC?
Um, yeah, not as much. I haven't had a whole lot of contact with Jamie Kirby, except in the early stages. I have corresponded quite a bit with MSU Extension and what's her name? Laurel. She's an EAB or like pest specialist in MSU Extension over in Bozeman. I mean, I think that there are definite benefits to having the city kind of play a more direct role in writing this. Just I, I've really struggled with in, in writing this, like how to sort of take that next step of like translating it in policy. You know, we've weighed out these cost scenarios and have general recommendations for a lot of things, but the main thing I'm concerned about is the timeline of getting it done.
Yeah. Well, I could just, I've been doing just a little, actually in relation to the planting brochure, I'm also looking for Emerald Ash Borre stuff and I can say that so far, the only one I've, the only complete plan in PDF form that I found was from Rapid City, much larger city, of course, than us. And their Emerald Ash Borre plan just sort of pales in comparison to what you've already put together. So my suggestion would be is to perhaps that, you know, turn it over to Cardos and then maybe Shannon could recommend that, you know, hey, meet with Cardos and say, hey, the tree board's already put together a real nice framework and perhaps they should flush it out, finish it up. And then those two, Shannon, Cardos could get together and review it and, and hopefully Shannon would recognize the urgency and say, they've already done it. They've already done most of it. Then maybe we go with their plan. We can get this implemented quickly because who knows when the bug's going to get here. There is urgency.
You know, I, I kind of I'm thinking along the same lines because we don't have the bug here and we have the growth policy in front of everyone. And so the vision is on the growth policy, but once the bug gets here, the city could be looking at a $2 million bill to deal with just hazard trees. And then there's no money for planting. And I don't want to say the train wrecks, but that's kind of what happens is that it'll be an all hands on deck thing to keep the streets safe. And then, then where are we? We do have the plan. We have a lot of the plan on the shelf. But I guess I'm concerned that the city will be blindsided with a, with an issue that basically is a natural disaster. It's kind of like the levee breaking. And, and we have a natural disaster and then it's kind of a, where are you sort of situation? And building on that, we just passed an ordinance that says that all the boulevard tree responsibilities are in the hands of citizens. So then, you know, just to extrapolate this and play chess, not checkers, Shannon's phone is going to be ringing off the hook with a bunch of people saying, what do you mean? I'm responsible to have this dead tree taken down on my boulevard? So I, I recognize that city is very, very busy and has all kinds of stuff going on. I've visited with Eric in the past about what he has on his platter. And I'm just in awe of what's the city has to do. But, you know, as a board, I feel like our recommendations are there to help keep the city out of trouble. And to help them avoid an outlier like this, a black swan incident that's going to, that's going to really, really put a major wrinkle in things. It, it's not dissimilar to this COVID business that we're dealing with as far as its impact on city operations. So those are my thoughts and I, you know, I, I don't feel that we have some right to jump the queue for city activities. But I would, I would hope that we would be able to play our role to keep the city from being blindsided by this.
And we've been proactive this winter. We've taken out 54 ash trees, you know, and we're you know, we're getting into our busy season right now where it's going to be hard to just focus completely on trees. Like you said, we've got other stuff we have to work on, but, um, yeah, we're doing the best we can.
Yep, you are. I, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
Well, I guess hearing this, yeah, I'm thinking it might make sense to add something in the letter kind of conveying the urgency of this. Basically saying, you know, as a board, we're concerned that if the city waits on this, that it could be blindsided and that it could, it could have a huge impact on city operations. So we'd recommend that the plan be a priority among the other plans that are in the queue.
And that we would, and that we would be willing to play an active role so that the city is not impacted so much by the plan writing. We have, we have the DNRC contacts and we're not, we, we would not put anything before the city that's not of course vetted for format by Matthew, vetted for contact by content by Shannon and so forth. But we, we want to help out so that this, this is not a huge issue down the road.
Yeah. So basically adding in there that, um, recognizing the constraints on the city budget and staff time with all the other planning that's happening, the board is willing to play an active role in creating the plan if this, yeah.
So this is Laurel. Um, when you say 2 million, Andy, was that going to all happen in one year that for hazard, they all have to come down at once? I mean, it could happen.
They'll be, they'll be infested in, in, in roughly the same time and rate. It's a small city. The canopies are, we have such a high percentage of ash trees. I would anticipate that the bugs would be able to travel tree to tree rather quickly. The city's done a very good job. Like Dan says, they took down 54 trees. And that's what it's going to take is, is, is getting space between the, the, the canopies that remain to make travel between the trees a little harder. But once they're in the city, they'll go rather quickly. You know, luckily we're a drier climate. I don't anticipate them rotting off the stump immediately. But they're all the similar age. So if they're infested at the same time, it only makes sense that they die in a relatively, speaking, short timeframe, say one to four years. And then that would, it would only follow that especially in a windy environment like this, it's not just trees falling over, it's limb shedding. And there's, there's a, a, over sidewalks since they are boulevard trees. So, you know, the expense would add up quickly. We're very fortunate in that the city has a contractor, Tom Carnatz, that works real closely with the city street crew and utilizes, uh, well, he cuts the city a very good price and then the city is excellent about coordinating with him to do the disposal. So right now, we're probably paying 30 to 40% of what most cities would pay.
Yeah.
2 million is kind of based on what, what would be the cost if you were to bring in tree services to do it. But it's still a high, high number for a town of seven or 8,000 people.
Yeah.
It's a big impact.
And, and I think your point that if we don't spend wisely and plan wisely, the replanting is what's in jeopardy and the replanting honestly is one of the most important aspects of this beyond the safety because we don't want a deforested city and it could easily happen.
That's right. You know, I'm, I don't know enough about city history to understand how the city forest, the municipal forest was established back in the day. Somebody did a lot of watering, somebody put an awful lot of thought into this that for us, a city in this environment, we have a remarkable municipal forest.
Yeah.
So that's only what the city owns and the city has done a remarkable job of taking care of it on a budget of 12 or $16,000 a year plus grants. Plus basically city time that can be peeled out of other activities. It's, it's, we're in a good place. And I would, I would not want the city to be in a, in a worse place.
Right. And I think it's, you know, it's not lost on many of us that most of the forest is in the wealthier, would, would have become and probably always were the wealthier parts of town. And when we move through this, we want to be very cautious that we don't just perpetuate that. We want this to be community wide. And that's with people's buy-in and understanding about, you know, what the, you know, what the role of the tree board. you know, what the role of the tree board is, it's, we're here for everybody, not just the fancy neighborhoods.
Well, having a business in town, I think that the the municipal forest is pretty well spread, Laurel, it's just that some people can afford tree care more than other people can.
Right.
So, you know, some parts of town, that the trees are in a little rougher shape. But there is forest canopy spread pretty evenly and that includes when we look at the new subdivisions, people have been very proactive about planting, so, you know, there is a, there is a social component of this. But there again, it's a if if the city has a a six or seven figure hit down the road somewhere, services are gonna be pulled from everyone in the city in order to to get that taken care of.
Yeah. You know.
Yeah, so hearing this, I just added a another point here in these guiding principles. So I'm saying ensure reforestation equitably in all neighborhoods and areas of the city. I think that's important, that kind of, I feel like the reforestation aspect of the plan of everything I've done so far is kind of weak and so that's one thing area where we could add it in.
Yeah, and a lot of what I've just going around, it's sort of anecdotal, but it seems like a lot of the planting is not really on city property, I mean, a lot of these neighborhoods don't have sidewalks. So I don't understand the boulevard, what belongs to the city and what doesn't, I know there's planting in people's yards, but I don't that that's separate, that's sort of a different issue and we probably should maybe, I don't know, does that belong in a plan that, you know, personal, there's a lot of that inside yards, it's not the city forest, it's private. Do we? I mean, it's not good to ignore it, but I'm not quite sure how to, what to say. Just that I guess we encourage. I don't know. Because even the tree list doesn't apply to inside your own yard, right? Like you can still plant all the aspen or cottonwood you want inside your yard.
Yeah, I feel like in terms of the city having having an EAB plan. From the examples I've seen of other cities and then just, you know, having worked on this, it seems like you know, although it is a significant issue, there's just it's almost like there's just so much to deal with just in terms of the city that
Yeah.
those the public trees that I think it's, you know, that's gonna be the focus of it, but yeah, I think that not like totally ignoring that the trees in people's yards are a major contributor to the total canopy in this in the city and that Ash Borer is gonna really reduce that.
I mean, this is a little late in the game. But in terms of how the public perceives this, is it the Emerald Ash Borer or is it trees in Livingston? I mean, I under, they're two different topics actually, but in terms of how we sort of you know, promote this for a plan. And again, I'm just, this is just a question. Because then, you know, do we? I mean, Emerald, so Dutch Elm came and went, there weren't that many Elms, we lost a lot of trees. It was a flash in the pan unless you had one of those trees. I, I think I don't know how much this is on people's radar and whether we just market it a little bit differently and say, protection of the canopy for Livingston, Montana or the urban forest or what the city forest or the municipal, whatever we want to say, but that we would would it take a lot to just make it a forest plan? And we might actually get more positive attention from that than just focusing on one thing.
Yeah, um. So an interesting question, I think that I think they were taken like a really big bite with this out of the sort of issues that are facing the city and that you know, cities like, you know, they, it it's pretty common to have a separate Ash Borer plan that is incorporated into like a general tree management plan and but yeah, I think that at some point in terms of like how we do outreach to people to get support for funding for the city to actually do what we're probably asking them to do in a plan. That, yeah, the that will involve kind of talking about the city, the the trees in the city as a whole. So I guess where I see this going is you know, we recommend that this plan be created. Hopefully it'll get done in a timely way and then kind of in the meantime, I think we'd be developing a proposal for tree maintenance districts. And then the costs, whatever kind of costs come out of the plan would be factored into that and then it would be sort of a major thing to do outreach to people to support. Yeah, tax assessment for trees, they would include ash bor treatment and replanting or whatever. So that that's kind of one way I see this playing out.
So what I'm, what what sort of is on my mind and Andy remembers this, I'm sure when the green ribbons went all over the place and it was, it was very nice project. And it said, this is coming and everyone's trees are gonna die and I mean, I'm sure it's been ten years, if it's been a day, do you remember, Andy, when was that? And so, of course, we have so many new people, maybe it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, I think it was like twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen.
Wolf almost, and so I'm just a little bit nervous that they'll be like, oh, that, you know.
Yeah.
Kind of couched it in some other terms, that's, that's all I'm thinking.
Oh, like that if we did the green ribbons again, people would be like, oh, we're still talking about that or something.
Well, and if we just have a title of the EAB plan that they might say, oh, that, you know, it never happened, we're not worried about it. So it's not here, talk to me when it's here kind of thing. But that, so I just think that's just how we propose it, that's all. Was that only five years ago, seven, yeah?
Yeah, that was twenty fourteen, that was, that was the year we moved back in.
It was really neat, I mean, I think everybody stopped and read the little cards, but.
Yeah. Well, I've put in here in the bullet points that we might consider doing that again.
Oh.
Or something, you know, I think that, I think that now that we're talking about an actual like official plan for the city, I think there is gonna be you know, role for the tree board in doing outreach to what kind of bring people back into that. And, yeah, I mean, I wasn't in Livingston for the green ribbon, so.
That was fun.
Before I moved here.
Well, I'll just jump in, the it's, it's pretty high in the letter about treatment, but that would be my my preference is to emphasize treatment, we've been talking about dead and dying trees and the cost of removal and I like that it's in there that it that it costs more to cut and remove a stump, cut a tree, remove a stump than it does to treat it, so my, I'd like to see an emphasis on the treatment because from what I've been reading, it's not a death sentence. It is, can be fairly expensive, but less expensive than removing the trees and if they, you know, I've seen pictures from the Midwest, they were just devastated, the Upper Midwest, Minnesota, Wisconsin. And just up and down the bow, up and down the boulevards, just dead trees. Totally changed the look and feel of this city. And yeah, most of the ash trees are in the, you know, the old part of town, but people who live out in the Star Edition and whatever the addition is up by the soccer fields and the armory and all that, they still visit town and hopefully appreciate the the mature forest that we have, so emphasis on treatment.
Yeah, maybe that's worth putting as a bullet near the bottom or in the section near the bottom about the recommendations. I've been a little confused about how to frame that, I mean, so we're basically saying, you know, please create a plan that factors in these kind of principles, I don't know. That seems maybe a little unconventional, but I I kind of wanted to just like put those out as like broad sideboards for like, you know, these are, this is like really the high level approach we would like to see this plan take. And then there are these bullets near the bottom that are more like things that the city could do as part of a plan and in support of it, you know, even beforehand, so this is like updating the tree inventory and stuff like that. So maybe we add as a bullet there, something like you know, like develop a develop a protocol of treatment that emphasizes like preservation of healthy and suitably located trees or something.
Because a lot of these ash trees are half dead already, having nothing to do with Ash Borer, they're just so old and windblown. You'd have to really pick carefully which ones you wanted to bother treating.
I I think that's an excellent point, there's a lot of them, for example, going down Geyser Street that the city's in the process of removing that are underneath the power line. And, you know, they just, there, there is no point in putting money into those or trees that have been topped. If, you know, it's a one of those things of a triage sort of thing. And Tom's point, it brings the cost of treatment way down when we're not talking about six hundred or four hundred and fifty trees anymore, maybe we're talking about some smaller fraction of that. The others do need to be removed and to remove them for reasons other than ash bor infestation such as the city is doing now is just really sound policy. Take those out that that are misplaced or missed in the wrong spot or are dying or whatever. And then that that defrays that cost when the ash bor hits of removal and it also eliminates from the the selection process those trees that are not probably worth treating.
Yeah.
Have all the the ailing trees been marked so we know which ones are due for removal that aren't diseased or anything, they're just old?
Dan, Dan can jump in here, but that that's what the city inventory was all about. And so they they are identified as removed trees, I believe. And and that's the document they're working off of, they're not just selecting trees at random to remove.
Yeah, we're going off of the removal list and so all the ash trees that are on the removal list, that's what we're removing right now.
You know, guys are around the corner from me, there were four or five, they were in the power lines, so they were removed recently.
Yeah, and tomorrow we're going on West Geyser and we're taking out three more ash trees and I I think that'll get our count up to fifty four that we've done, you know, this winter. So like I said, we're doing the best we can with what we, what we have and what budget we have.
I do think a statement about treatment in their marshal is important.
Okay.
And because.
Yeah, specific.
I think that that takes the sticker shock of it down a little bit when we realize that through normal attrition, we're not going to be treating every ash in the count that's on on municipal property. But that there are many specimens that are worth looking at for making that investment.
Yeah.
Can I ask, how does this removal program jive with the city ordinance where the homeowner is responsible? And the city's coming in and taking over, taking down these trees, I'm not sure how the two coincide.
Well, so I think the, in the ordinance, the city can do whatever they want with the trees. It's basically that.
It seems like there might be problems down the, you know, at least from Homer's perspective, down the road, say, hey, this move those trees, why isn't the city gonna remove my tree now that it's dead from Emerald Ash Borer?
It's still too.
Anyway, just a thought.
So the ones that are being removed now, the homeowners aren't being charged for them? Does anybody know?
No, yeah, yeah, the homeowners aren't being charged, the city is, you know, it's, this is with the DNRC grant, you know, and the city's come up with fifteen thousand and DNRC has fifteen thousand, I think it's all coming out of that account.
Oh, that, okay.
Dan, Dan, wasn't there some Northwestern Energy money to take those out that are under the power line too?
Um, I think Eric did mention something about that and I'd have to ask him again.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
I think the ones on Geyser were part of the Northwestern Energy Grant.
Yeah.
And maybe on not Summit, I can't remember, another street up on on the other side.
Yeah, as far as I know, I think it's all coming out of that DNRC, but I could be wrong, I'll run it by Eric and see what he says.
That.
Did you hear a city commission meeting? And Courtney basically said the city gets to pick and choose, which I think is kind of a slippery slope, you know, and then there the, she said they would do it on a case by case, which I I agree with Tom, I think that's a little problematic.
I I was, I was there also, Laurel, and you know, I guess we're a, we're a board that makes recommendations and the city is prepared to deal with that. I I agree with you, but it's a, it's a after looking into it, it's a discretionary measure for the city, they can, they can do that, they can pick and choose. So that's something that they're working out.
Yeah. So the, yeah, these issues of sort of like transparency to the homeowner and then like how these preemptive replacements would work and how people would know whether their tree is slated for treatment or removal or whatever, like those are exactly the sort of questions where I'm like ready to hand this to the city and have them from, you know, planning and legal perspective come up with something that they would come back to us and then we would be able to comment on it and, you know, however, we can be involved to help them in drafting that, I mean, I just think that at this point, I'm I think there's a lot of positive in this sort of new, new process that we're going into of kind of handing it off to the commission, so.
It's, it's revealed a lot of the complexity for me, Marshall, that I I guess I was kind of naive about what all goes into it and now I have a deeper appreciation for the process and maybe we don't want to just I don't want to say do this in a vacuum, but it 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 does need to be covered by a wider umbrella. At at some point, we're gonna need to make a motion on this letter. And I appreciate the discussion, I'm a lot more comfortable with where things are going than I was when I sat down.
Speaking of wider umbrella, is, does anybody know if there's a sort of a statewide effort? Or is each city and town on their own? Because it sure seems like there should be a statewide effort, it's gonna hit every single community. And, you know, like they do with invasive species in bilge water or whatever in boats, you know, they have that on the signs and stuff, they should you know, I don't know, somebody should contact the DNRC to see if they want to, some, if there's enough manpower to coordinate a kind of a statewide effort. Because from, we're not, we're not probably gonna get much of it here, but from back east, Midwest, that is, a lot of the Ash Borer was spread because when a tree died, they cut them up, they into firewood, then they took the firewood to some other town. And, you know, the beetle spread from that. And so I just wonder if the state would you know, help us out a little bit with, if nothing else, with publicity and some kind of at least a umbrella plan.
Yeah, well, so the DNRC has like a they have a kind of a high level plan that's more of like a framework for like what happens when the infestation first occurs somewhere in the state, you know, how does the communication handle? How's that handled, how do the agencies coordinate? But from everything I've heard from DNRC, it's like, and you know, this is the way it's worked in other states, it's like every city is on their own pretty much for funding and their specific program. And their specific program.
Well, yeah, I think. One of the things I'd be willing, it was. You know, I already, already saw that, we talked about it before, it's, it was in Boulder, Colorado, and then I saw on the Fort Collins website that it made it up to Fort Collins. As far as the Dakotas, I've seen it on the eastern edge of the Dakotas, but not anything, I haven't. The, anything definitive farther west than the eastern edge of the Dakotas. So one of the things I'd be willing to do is to make some calls and sort of get an idea of where it is. You know, and what those cities are doing. And then as you move closer to Livingston and it's not here yet, then perhaps, you know, find out what other cities are doing to prepare for it. And then we can use that information however we want.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've done quite a bit of that. But I, yeah, if you wanted to take a run at it, I, so basically. You know, as soon as it's detected and it's been confirmed, I think it like goes on the map on that website, like within like days.
Because it's. Look at the map, it didn't seem that specific, but maybe I have to check it out again.
Well, it highlights every county where it's been detected, I mean, it's like a. It's like a big deal federally for tracking it through it, through AFIS, I think. And then as far as like other cities, yeah, I think that'd be interesting to know through DNRC, but. Like I've called around quite a bit, I think Bozeman has kind of the first and best plan. In Montana, Whitefish just wrapped up a plan like in the last couple of months. I talked to the Billings Public Works Director, they have an ordinance like ours and they have absolutely no plan, they say it's gonna be a total train wreck unless they do something. Helena, hi, they have a tree tax and they, they hired like two additional full-time arborists to cut down all their ash trees before it gets here. Yeah, there's just a real variety and it's kind of interesting to have those points of reference, but. The kind of takeaway for me was. You know, we'll, we'll know exactly when it first hits Montana and. There, there's such a variety in the way the communities are approaching this that. It kind of comes down to the community to define what they want to do with their ash trees.
Yeah.
Within their kind of resources and. Whatever else.
That's good. Oh, the letter. We wanna vote now, should we? You know, give it a quick edit, send edits to you or do something and then do it by email and. Do a quick vote and get it to the commission, I mean, is it ready? It seems like there's been a ton of work, they'll be more ahead, but trying to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, so I don't think we can do a vote over email, what I would propose is that. I feel like there's some pretty specific points that have come up that I think are really good. So what I could do is edit the letter and maybe I would do some final little. Things in the big report too, but at that, at this point, I'm just less worried about all the details of that. I think that I'm just gonna kind of let that go. And the letter is the main thing, so yeah, I think. What I could do is revise that and then we could put this on our agenda for our meeting next Thursday. And if people want more time, I think, you know, we could do it the next month, but I, I just think we're. Yeah, I think that having some time today to really focus on discussion is good and maybe we're ready next week to just vote.
I think so, I think that's a good idea and in the meantime, if we have any suggestions, let's all send them to you. So that we can, so that we can make a final vote next week.
Yeah.
Send it on to the commission.
Yeah, that sounds great, if you have things you think of.
Okay, and then maybe next week we can also talk about. Steps, future steps to keep our. To keep our. Process. Keep our, keep the attention, I mean, not that we want to steal attention to other projects, but our, you know, there's urgency for the tree board as well. As the other committees, and I know there's a lot going on for the city, but we want to keep. Well, we can talk about steps about how to keep it, keep it in the forefront for the commission.
Yeah, that's good. So basically, the kind of takeaways that I've heard that I would add into the letter are. We want to add just a little paragraph, maybe near the top, just saying, you know, we. Conveying the urgency of this, that we believe it should be a priority for the city within the plans that are coming down the pipe and that. The tree board's willing to help play a role in the drafting of it. However, that's useful. And then adding. As far as, yeah, adding down here in the bullets of these specific recommendations. Something about treatment, so that's not really like lost in this wishy-washy stuff up here, that it's basically like we. As a specific thing, we want the city to develop a. A protocol for treatment of priority ash trees, something like that. If people have ideas about the wording of that, you could let me know. And. I think that's the main thing, is there any stuff that's in here that people think we should take out, like that's. Too much, I mean, like I've got this thing down here about. Considering updating the tree management plan. I think that. That seems like a good thing to have in there. That, you know, it's kind of a way of getting our foot in the door with that a little bit, like we think this should be integrated into a bigger plan in the long term.
That certainly speaks to Laurel's idea about the, the broader. Municipal forest being considered.
You know, I wonder if everyone could just read it and, you know, see if there's parts, I mean, it's pretty long. It's pretty dense and it's super interesting to all of us, but sometimes simple is good as well. If we could maybe just be ready with some edits for you. And then, I mean, it's, it's very good, it doesn't. It should be just people, you know, a little minor here and there, but I think just. We probably don't need to overthink this, it's obviously, we know how city government, we know how government works, there'll be time.
Yeah. Cool, so you're, you're talking about the letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, I think the main thing is just like. I think we want to make, like, kind of err on the side of having like everything we think we might want them to consider. You know, we want to kind of cast a bit of a broad net with this, I think. So that there's some basis later on of saying like, you know, we asked you. Please consider this or something, I don't know, it's all new to me, so.
Dan, did you have a chance to read the letter?
Um, yeah, I read, I read a little bit of it.
Yeah.
Well, I, I need to catch up, get caught up to speed and read some more of it.
Well, I'm not putting you on the spot, just as the, it's sort of living this day to day, I was just curious about. You know, how it, how it comes across, not that, I'm not, that's okay, I'm not putting you on the spot, I was just.
That's all right. I'm trying to figure it out as we go to, I've been busy doing other stuff for the city and focusing my all attention on that, but. I need to take some time and read it.
Yeah, like, do we need this part in here about the budget, like it'll definitely be more than the city's current tree budget? And requesting that this commission. Or requesting that the city give the commission like a staff or a budget estimate, maybe we don't even need that in there, I don't know.
Maybe not on the initial letter.
Yeah, just an acknowledgement that this is likely to cost more than the current tree budget.
Yeah. Of thirteen thousand dollars.
You know, we're. We're gonna catch up and then there's a cute problem and then there's planning for the future and that's not reflected in the current budget.
Okay.
So I don't think we, I guess I, I think we should wait till next week to make, take a vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, that's good, so yeah, next week on our, oh, maybe. Maybe next week would be over, oh, God, Zoom. So Shannon is gonna visit with us for the first part of the meeting. To give us kind of an overview of the budget and. Yeah, his ideas for things we could work on, I just thought it'd be kind of good to touch base with him.
Right. So we really, that's good, I think we really want to stress that, that we're here to help the city. You know, we're available to help and, and to, to provide, provide these things, so. Let's stress that in the letter.
Yeah. Cool, well, as far as logistics for next meeting. It looks like the weather could be decent, like sunny and forties, who knows how windy it'll be, do people want to try and meet in the gazebo?
That sounds good to me.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay. I guess, yeah, we'd be asking if Shannon could swing by. And then, Dan, you think he'd be cool with that or?
Yeah, I'll pass it along to him, see what he says, I think he'd be fine with it.
Okay, yeah, I think it'd be nice to get going with in-person meetings again. I think between. Planitis and Zoom fatigue. Ready to move on to something a little different, so.
We also have a portable office outside behind the cannon, it's in that storage shed. And we have tables and everything right there, so if you want to just do it here, we can as well.
Okay, where is that?
Um, out on, at the courthouse, on the side yard, we got some earlier in the year for these little. We, I think they're actually out there in the shed, but if not, they're down here in the EOC and we just take them outside. And we've had meetings outside, right on the courthouse lawn.
Okay.
Another option.
Yeah, do people have a preference there?
I'd like to go to the gazebo if we can, but there's this other option is good to have.
Yeah, maybe we could advertise it as the gazebo and then. If for some reason the weather is really bad, we could just post a note at the gazebo telling people we're going to this other office or something.
Well, and we have, I don't think anybody on Thursdays uses the. The community room and it's set up really wide with the Polycom and everything, so you can very safely have 10, 12, 15 people in there.
Okay.
I don't know what the city rules are currently, I have no idea.
All right.
Okay.
Cool, hey, well, um. Yeah, thanks everybody for.
Okay.
Dealing with this. Yeah, I'll send out the notice and we'll see you next week.
Great.
Very much.
Thanks for all the work.
Bye.
Bye.